Good evening, everyone. If you would, please take your seats and we'll be starting momentarily. At this time, I'd like to call the City of Bowie Regular City Council Meeting of Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is now eight oh four in council chambers. At this time, I would ask those who are able to rise but for all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, can you confirm for the record that we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a full quorum this evening. In council chambers, we have council member Steph, council member Rogers, Mayor Proton Wolfley, Mayor Adams, council member Brady, council member Truesdale, and council member Endebo Madu.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain any motion for agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Seeing none, we will go on to citizen participation. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up? Thank you, Wilma. QC James or John? I can't quite make it out, but... How you doing?
I'm doing great. How about yourself?
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the Economic Development Committee and fellow partners in progress. My name is QC Jones. I'm a board member of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce. It is a privilege to stand before you tonight as a representative of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce, representing many businesses that have formed the heartbeat of this great city. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our members, and the wider business community, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak and to express our continued commitment to the City of Bowie's economic growth, business sustain sustainability, and shared prosperity. The Chamber's partnership with the City of Bowie extends back to the nineteen eighties, and throughout that time, we have stood together through periods of growth, transition, and renewal, and our relationship has always been grounded in a common vision to make Bowie not just a place where people live, but a place where businesses thrive, where innovation take root, and where economic vitality fulfills community life. Our guided motto, "Educate, Advocate, and Connect," continues to shape everything we do. We educate by offering workshops and professional development led by experts from the United States Small Business Administration as well as the Bowie Business Innovation Center. We advocate by representing our members' interests before local, county, and state officials, ensuring that policies and decisions help, not hinder, business success, and we connect by fostering collaborations among entrepreneurs, community leaders, residents through events such as networking partnership that strengthens the business ecosystem. As we look ahead, the Chamber remains committed to working collaboratively with the city leaders to ensure that business community remain viable, visible, and vibrant. Together, we can build a decade of partnerships to shape the future of Bowie, continue to lead not only as a great place to live, but as a dynamic place to do business. So, on behalf of the Greater Bowie Chamber, I thank you for your dedication to this city's future and for your commitment to inclusive, sustainable economic growth. We look forward to continuing our work together in making Bowie next chapter its best chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to presentations. I don't see any on the agenda. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. We will now go on to city boards and committees, appointments, reappointments, and swearing hands. Mr. George Collin was interviewed on November third, two thousand and twenty-five, for appointment to the Green Team Executive Committee. Council concur to appoint him to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. Council member Rogers, would you like to make that motion?
I'd like to move that we accept. I'm sorry, I don't have his name in front of me.
Sure, George. George Collin?
Mr. George Collins, as a member of the...
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, same favor. Hearing none. Motion carries. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you today? All right. At this time, I'd like to do the swearing in. Council members can join me. Okay, aye, state your name.
Aye, George Collin.
Do swear or affirm?
I swear, do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance?
Be faithful and bear full allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And the laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute, execute the office of, and state the office?
Execute the office of Bowie Green Team Executive Committee.
Very good. According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of this state?
And the laws of this state.
Congratulations. Thank you. Come forward. On behalf of the city and the city council, I'd like to thank you for your volunteerism and your support.
Thank you.
Here you go, sir.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you. We look forward to twenty years of service.
Congratulations on the board. We already shook hands. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
To take a moment and say thank you to fellow council members and everyone who turned up for the Veterans Day program. It was a very nice program. I know it was a little chilly and we had to move it indoors, but thank you, everyone, for participating in that. And again, though slightly belated, thank you to all of our veterans, which the city has a lot of, and we thank you for your service. I would also like to give congratulations, even though we'll do it a little later as well. Congratulations to Jesse Bugs, to the staff, and the whole team for that wonderful ribbon cutting that we had. Thank you so very much for putting that together.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead, Jesse.
I was just going to say thank you very much, and I'm pleased that a couple of you were able to come, and we look forward to you visiting the site to see what services they have to offer.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other announcements from council members? Council member Truesdale?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to all the beautiful and wonderful people in the City of Bowie, particularly District Three as well, and to kind of echo what the mayor was saying in terms of Veterans Day month, salute to all the veterans. My son, he's just finished his basic training, and so congratulations to Kennedy Truesdale as well, and all who served. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for all... Absolutely, absolutely. So, just wanted to send a shout out and just happy Veterans Day for everybody.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Hearing none, we will now go on to the City Manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and residents out there. You know, the, you know, the four hundred-plus people that work for us here are, our job is service delivery and we want to do it, be seamless about it, and be so good at it that people just forget about it. And, for example, like our police department, our code enforcement people who are obviously aware, and our solid waste division that picks up the trash twice a week, plus recycling and yard waste seamlessly. And, but so right now, there is a major operations going on that is a seamless operation. As you know, Bowie is a tree city on steroids, especially if you're in my house, because I have ninety-one trees. But our, a combination of our parks and grounds with our stormwater and other public works operations are collecting leaves all over town without an issue. Currently, they're going to go through the great neighborhood of Northridge, and I have at least fifteen yards of leaves on the curb waiting for them. And they do this tremendous job, this is a Catholic service, without, seamlessly without flaw. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, City Manager. At this time, we will move to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. We will now move on to old business and the adoption of Resolution R dash one oh five dash twenty-five approving the creation of the Federal Employees Financial Assistance Program. Do we have anyone to... Go ahead, Mr. Bugs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your council package, I provided a plan and proposal to create, implement, and manage a program to administer, fund, to assist federal employees affected by the federal government shutdown and firings in the past several months. Last week, Congress made some major moves that significantly altered that plan and proposal. Ending the federal shutdown enabled a large number of federal workers to begin to return to work and to have some assurance of getting paid and, in some cases, receive back pay. According to the Federal News Network, with the end of the forty-three-day shutdown, where six hundred and seventy thousand employees were furloughed and seven hundred and thirty thousand have been working without pay, and roughly four thousand were irref, the Office Personnel Management and the seventeen-page memo to all employees that I have here have provided guidance on the return to the office and compensation policy for all federal workers. The guidance is committed to ensuring that retroactive pay is provided as soon as possible. In the City of Bowie today, my staff Gretchen Dade, who's sitting here, contacted several properties, rental properties, just to check to see where some of these people stand at this time. The properties that responded were El Vista, Fairmont, which is over at South Lake. Governors Green, Ivana, also known as Heather Ridge, reported to us that approximately fifty-five of their residents who are federal workers were delinquent in their rents totaling approximately sixty thousand dollars as of today. Now, that, those units do not include several other properties, including the Bowen and any single-family rental properties or condos that are rental properties, Bowie Commons or Elder Oaks or any of those places where seniors might still be working for the federal government. So, we have four properties and four or five, and maybe a lot of others that are single-family rentals that are not including those numbers. Some estimate it's probably closer to a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there. So, the other costs that are in that document that you received from me that we talked about providing some assistance with in that plan also warrant some consideration, and that those costs were like childcare, food, those kinds of things. Hopefully, mortgages and utilities are kind of being worked out through, particularly mortgages with those firms. And utility costs, of course, you know, all the utility companies provided some relief for residents. None of them offered full relief, but some. I think WSAC provided probably the most significant, where they would, if you paid fifty percent, they would pay the other fifty percent and clear your account, or if you paid twenty-five percent, they would forgive twenty-five percent and then give you time to pay the balance. So, each one offered something, but there's still that cost burden on some of these households, a lot of which in the City of Bowie, whether you know it or not, are really cost burden. However, some consideration to assistance with this large delinquent utility bill still might be warranted. Now, my office continues to work with all residents in the city on a number of issues, including homelessness and all housing and homelessness issues in the city come to my office for us to resolve. We have some money from you, some money from the council that we use for these purposes. So, work, while on the scale and scope of what we originally proposed, is no longer, you know, of the magnitude that we anticipated. The remnants of the shutdown and just the remain and are affecting residents who still need help. So, to the extent that you understand and are willing to approach some level of assistance to those people and those services, I think the number that, if I had to come up with something based on just what we told you today, it would be somewhere around four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. So, it is our, you know, it is a fact today that some of these people who were not working will get their money at some time here in the near future. The OPM guidance says that the departments are to provide compensation for these people as soon as possible. They wrote out a plan, agency by agency, to do that, and there are many variations, permutations associated with the types of people who actually receive compensation over time. And so, there are many different payment schedules and entities that are involved in paying federal employees. The federal government provides the money, but there are many, many different entities that actually cut the checks and send them to the employees. So, there will be a number of people for some time who will not receive but a part of their pay for some time to come. So, with that in mind, we ask that you continue to consider some type of compensation for those populations to include rent, childcare, some utility costs, and those kinds of costs. And with that, I'll close and see if there are any questions at this time.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing I want...
City Manager?
Yeah. One thing I want to make sure everybody understands that, I think in the first Trump administration, there was a federal law that was passed that requires the back pay and compensation for federal employees associated with shutdowns, and it's still in effect. And so, those federal employees who are still on the rolls, I mean, who were not terminated, will be subject to that reimbursement and back pay, albeit a week from now or two weeks from now. The people that are not would be there, who will get the back pay are the contractors associated with those organizations, because they don't get paid. That's a matter of fact. But your staff has no real position. This is, this is your, it depends on what you all want to do with this. We're prepared to provide whatever support you'd like, but the federal employees will get their money back eventually. This is the law.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager, and I think that's the point. As we initially brought this up is when the shutdown was continuing and we were looking to support our furloughed federal workers here in the City of Bowie. Now, as we've heard, things have changed now because everybody should be back to work, so to speak. And we're talking about those who were furloughed, and not laid off, but just those who were furloughed. One of the things we did talk about with doing this too, though, was to make sure that we took a look at what the city had to offer everyone. When it comes to just services, sometimes people don't realize those services that are available. And I'm talking about everything from the food pantry to those other services provided, just like we started as we did the ribbon cutting this week. So, I think it's important. I'm not sure where the rest of the council is, and I'll give you a chance to speak, but let me hear the feelings now of your thoughts. Council member DeFoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank staff for due diligence and work in getting this research and put together. I do think this is something that is overtaken by events. It's not to say that there won't be a future, you know, need in January, somewhere down the road, or a year from now, or two years, or what have you. But I do think that at present, we're out of the woods. You know, having been a federal employee before, you know, it's never easy not knowing whether or not you're going to get your check, but the good news is everybody will be getting their check, and everybody who was under a rift situation or let go for, during that time period, is by law now obligated to be brought back on board. So, I think that that's really good news for us locally, for our economy, for our community. And I think this is probably something we ought to table for future, future needs at some point in time. But at present, I don't think there's, there's a need. It's just a matter of timing, but I think the intent is understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the city manager responded to what I was thinking, which was there are federal contractors that don't get back pay. I have just one question for Director Bug. Are you adequately resourced in a general manner when it comes to supporting the community? And I'm not looking so much at this federal furlough, but generally, in your responsibilities, do you believe that you're adequately resourced to support those individuals within the city that may need help?
Well, right now, we're looking at a budget of about sixty thousand dollars, fifty, I think, at this point, where we provide assistance to folks who are homeless or those who are encountering serious problems with housing, where we sometimes put them up in hotels for a short time, or we assist them with rental payments, first, their first month's payment and down payment, and the, not down payment, what is the, yeah, first month's. Right. So, but right now, without having to answer any of the calls related to any of these people, which is what we're deciding here, I think, through the end of the year, our resources are sufficient. Again, with this, if this population starts calling, that's a different question. We'll just have to tell them, as we always do, that we don't have any resources to assist them.
Okay. Thank you for that. I just wanted, I was just kind of curious, but I agree with Councilmember Wolfley in that when we first came up with this, you know, the mayor suggested this idea, it was something that probably should have been acted on quicker by us waiting, you know, it was overcome by events. And I agree that right now, there's no longer a need for this type of program, but I do know that if something similar comes up again in the future, and who knows if it does or not, at least we have something to go to that we'll be able to act on faster, because we have information in front of us in case the scenario occurs again in the future. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I have one point I'd like to make, make people feel a little better. We, the Prescyotis County has an extensive and a rather large social services operation that helps provide a lot, a lot of services, from counseling to rent issues, homelessness, and we know, we know where all those programs are, and one of our jobs is to refer people to the right place, and rather than taking it on ourselves. And that sixty thousand dollars, plus our knowledge of where to go at the county or the state, helps us deal with one situation or another.
Thank you, City Manager, and that's a good clarification. I would like to just comment, too. If people would look through the, have the opportunity to look through the proposal you did, I think that they do a very good job of outlining those current support systems within the city. So, I think it would be good for all of us to make sure that people get an opportunity to go back and look at that plan so that they can be refreshed again on all the services that the city provides. Having said that, any other? Council, councilman Steph?
Just wanted to quickly say thank you to the mayor and to this group for fast action on this one. I know this has been incredibly rough several months for our many federal employees. We know there's been a lot of back and forth and uncertainty, but I do appreciate this group for coming together and working hard and thinking through solutions for many folks who I know have been hurting. So, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues.
for a short time, or we assist them with rental payments, their first month's payment and down payment, and the, not down payment, what is the, yeah, first month's. So, but right now, without having to answer any of the calls related to any of these people, which is what we're deciding here, I think, through the end of the year, our resources are sufficient. Again, if this population starts calling, that's a different question. We'll just have to tell them, as we always do, that we don't have any resources to assist them.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted, I was just kind of curious, but I agree with Councilmember Wolfley in that when we first came up with this, you know, the mayor suggested this idea, it was something that probably should have been acted on quicker by us waiting, you know, it was overcome by events, and I agree that right now, there is no longer a need for this type of program. But I do know that if something similar comes up again in the future, and who knows if it does or not, at least we have something to go to that we'll be able to act on faster, because we have information in front of us in case the scenario occurs again in the future. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor, one point I'd like to make, make people feel a little better. We, the Prince George County has an extensive and a rather large social services operation that helps provide a lot of services, from counseling to rent issues, homelessness, and we know where all those programs are, and one of our jobs is to refer people to the right place, rather than taking it on ourselves. And that sixty thousand dollars, plus our knowledge of where to go at the county or the state, helps us deal with one situation or another.
Thank you, City Manager, and that's a good clarification. I would like to just comment, too, if people would look through the, have the opportunity to look through the proposal you did, I think that they do a very good job of outlining those current support systems within the city. So, I think it would be good for all of us to make sure that people get an opportunity to go back and look at that plan, so that they can be refreshed again on all the services that the city provides. Having said that, any other?
Michael.
Councilman, Councilman Estee?
Just wanted to quickly say thank you to the mayor and to this group for fast action on this one. I know this has been incredibly rough several months for our many federal employees. We know there's been a lot of back and forth and uncertainty, but I do appreciate this group for coming together and working hard and thinking through solutions for many folks who I know have been hurting. So, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues and to staff for helping us out and executing on all these great ideas we have up here.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to echo Councilman Estee's comments directed towards you. Thank you for bringing this forward. It was timely. Unfortunately, we got caught up in the time, if you will, and that is a frustration, because we started out with great intentions of doing something, and then, what, six weeks later, that problem has disappeared and is no longer needed. It was a great exercise, but we're going to move on. And I think maybe, and I'm wondering if we ought to rethink that aspect of it and look at establishing a, what I would call would be an emergency financial assistance program that basically has all these elements that are available to be put into place and activated with a resolution or a declaration by this body that there is an emergency and we can tap into it and have it on the shelf ready to go, rather than waiting a year or two and having something happen and we have to reinvent the wheel. I'd rather, excuse me, I'd rather take this time and this effort and basically codify it in a way that we can draw it in the future. Remember, what about a year and a half ago, we had the condominiums that burned, and Councilman Truesdale was very good in helping out and assisting them, but had we had a program in place that we could have, by resolution, activated it based upon a declaration of emergency, and we kick in and we have the resources, I think maybe it's an opportunity right now for us to develop something that we can trigger if there is an emergency, rather than having to reinvent the wheel. So, I would suggest we continue looking at this, not necessarily to put it in place and start funding it per se, but rather have all of the components in place that we can, the next time around, immediately open it up and start moving forward. So, that would be my suggestions.
Thank you, Councilman, and I think along those lines, from a position, I think it would be good, if we could just continue a little bit, City Manager, if staff could, we could look at taking out just it as it reflects upon the federal employees, but I think we already have now a solid package that we can go back to. I think it could be tweaked, Mr. Bugs, just in taking out, being directly about federal furlough employee, but just as a general package, and I think all of that work will be utilized, and we will have that on hand. So, if we could do that, City Manager?
We can ask the finance assistant director, who's going to be running things, and to plug that into the budget process forthcoming, and see if we can't add an objective to somebody's, to Mr. Bugs's operation, maybe, or the emergency management department to take on these issues, and then present that to you all in April.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. If we're general consensus, we're good with that?
We're good.
Okay. All right, thank you, City Manager. And again, Mr. Bugs and to the entire staff, I know this was a lot of work, short term, Frank, but you know, it's what you do and it's what we do, you know, and I appreciate the vigor in City Manager as well, that everyone went at this, to try and make sure that we could help our neighbors, our friends. And so, again, thank you so very much for your hard work, and thank you all for everything you did with this program. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We will now be moving on to a new business, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Phase Two. The city's consultant, Loring Consulting Engineers, will present the Energy Conservation Measure, ECM, recommendations based on the Level Two Energy Audits conducted at City Hall and Ken Hill Center.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Lexi Willam, Sustainability Planner for the city of Bowie. I'm very happy to introduce our consultants, Loring Consulting Engineers, to do the presentation of their energy audits on City Hall and Ken Hill Center. These are two buildings that will be required to comply with state building energy and performance standards set forth in the Maryland Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022. So, this is the city's way of trying to proactively look at these buildings and figure out what we need to do to comply with these laws in the future. This is also a part of our environmental action plan, which you will be seeing in another couple of weeks or so. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our consultant. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Lexi. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Walker, with Loring Engineers.
Good evening. My name is Mustafa Diak. I'm a group leader for the Maryland Office for Loring Consulting Engineers, and we thank you for the opportunity to actually do this study for you.
Thank you.
Yes, good to see you all again. We were here about a year ago to present to you the plan we did at that time, which was the Energy Efficiency and Net Zero Strategy for the city of Bowie. So, this project, this study takes that a step further by looking in depth at two of the facilities that, as Lexi mentioned, are subject to the State of Maryland Building Energy Performance Standards. Just briefly, a quick background on who we are, Loring Engineers, established in 1956, 200-plus employees across nine offices. As you can see the credentials there, we've worked on many LEED-certified buildings, performed many energy audits. This will be about a 15-minute presentation, so a quick overview of what we're going to speak about. We'll give an overview and purpose behind the study. We will look back at the Maryland Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022. We will explain the Building Energy Performance Standards. We will look at the two facilities, City Hall and Ken Hill Center, and see how their current performance is versus the targets that need to be met. We will look at estimated penalties if no action is taken. Then, we will get into the energy audit, which is the plan of action, the energy end-use breakdown. We will present the projects that we are proposing and their estimated savings and costs. We will highlight a few of them in depth, and we'll take your questions at the end. So, the purpose behind this study is the city of Bowie selected Loring to conduct ASHRAE Level Two Energy Audits for two city-owned buildings, subject to the new State of Maryland Building Energy Performance Standards, also known as BEPS. The goal of the audits is to provide decision-makers with a reliable, data-driven foundation to evaluate high-cost energy-saving projects and ensure compliance with BEPS regulations, including emissions reduction and energy use intensity standards. So, once again, why this is, why this study is being undertaken, and the primary goal is to ensure compliance with the State of Maryland's law that was passed in 2022 called the Climate Solutions Now Act, and this law requires buildings that are over 35,000 square feet first to annually report their energy consumption, and second, to meet certain building energy performance standards. So, if you look at the timeline up on your screen, 2025 is the first year that annual energy benchmarking reports are due. So, those are typically due in June. There was a reprieve of three months that was given this year for it being the first year. So, the State of Maryland will be collecting that data and using that to set the EUI standards, which we'll talk about in a minute. So, the BEPS sets limits for two things. There's number one, net direct emissions, and number two, site energy use intensity. So, I just want to get that point across, that there are two different standards here that they will be looking at to determine if buildings are in compliance. The first one, net direct emissions, what that essentially means is how much fossil fuels are being used at a facility. So, typically, natural gas or propane, and those are often used for heating, domestic hot water heating, cooking, and so this, and what you see on this timeline here, 2030 to 2034 is the first interim standard. In 2035 through 2039, there's a second, more stringent standard, and by 2040, they call that the final standard. And at that point, they are expecting all buildings to have fully electrified their heating systems and have no natural gas on-site. There are some buildings, schools, restaurants, are still allowed to continue using fossil fuels, but buildings such as these, City Hall, Ken Hill Center, which are office buildings, are expected to comply with that. I will talk a little bit later about that second standard, the site energy use intensity. Alternative compliance fees will be assessed annually, beginning with calendar year 2030 data, and this will also apply to the future ice arena, but that was not a part of this So, about that site energy use intensity standard, that second standard that I was mentioning, MDE intends to adopt an energy efficiency standard called Site EUI in 2027. Essentially, what this EUI means is how much energy a facility uses on a square footage basis. So, it takes anything, whether it's electricity, natural gas, puts it all together, divides it by the square footage, and says, your building has to be at or below a certain energy performance. What we currently don't know is what level the EUI standards will be set at. As it says, this will be announced in 2027. We can look at neighboring Montgomery County to get an idea for where we think these standards will be set at, because Montgomery County, they have their own BEPS program, which is a couple of years ahead of the state program, so, and theirs is also based on site EUI. So, we'll show where those levels are in comparison to these two buildings in just a minute. We don't know when these will be, when they will need to be met. We can probably assume that it's following the same timeline as the net direct emission standards, which we presented on the previous slide, but we don't know that for a fact. And we don't know what the penalties are for missing them. We do know the penalties for missing the net direct emission standards, which we'll get to in just a second. So, how are these two buildings currently performing versus the targets? You can see on the left-hand side here, the first two bars show the net direct emissions for Ken Hill Center and City Hall. That's based on their performance from the previous three calendar years, 2022 through 2024, and where they need to get to by 2030 is a much smaller bar there. So, that's a 90% reduction at City Hall and an 81% reduction at Ken Hill Center. You can see by 2035, that's where it goes to that second, more stringent standard, and then by 2040, it's zero. So, what are the estimated penalties if no action is taken? This shows for the first 11 years, starting in 2030. So, we estimate 50,000 or so for those first few years, and you can see it just continues to go up from there. That's for City Hall and Ken Hill Center. So, it's all based on square footage, so being a smaller facility, and also, it's closer to meeting the targets than City Hall. You can see those are smaller penalties, starting around 12,000 or so. So, that brings us to the energy audit, which is the plan of action for how to meet these targets. The energy audit establishes a baseline for a building's energy use. It identifies areas of energy use improvement and provides a data-driven roadmap for achieving The first step is to establish what's called the Energy End Use Breakdown. So, to determine this, we went space by space through these two buildings. We looked at the capacities of all the systems that use energy in the facility, looked at how many hours per day, per week they operate, what speeds pumps operate at, et cetera, and developed this. And as you can see, space heating makes up the largest piece of the pie for both facilities, followed by space cooling, and then you get into other categories, such as domestic hot water, air distribution, lighting, plug loads, IT systems. So, this helps us to identify where we should focus our efforts in saving energy. So, you first and foremost want to look at the biggest slices of the pie, because that's where it's going to be easiest to find savings. So, these two charts here are showing for each of the two facilities, Ken Hill Center on the left, City Hall on the right. The bar on the left-hand side shows the existing energy usage, broken down again by category, and the bar on the right shows the projected energy usage, if all of the proposed projects in our study get implemented. So, as you can see, it's roughly a 50% reduction in energy usage at each of the facilities that we've estimated. Also, pay attention to the red bar on each of these charts. That tells you, as I was mentioning before, about Montgomery County's building energy performance standards. This shows you where each of these two facilities would fall if they were in Montgomery County. So, that gives us an idea of likely where the State of Maryland is going to set their standards. So, you can see Ken Hill Center is already below the bar, so that is excellent. City Hall has a ways to go to get there, but if, again, if all the proposed projects are implemented, we do expect that City Hall would be able to get below that line. So, what are these projects that we're talking about? First, at City Hall, there are 14 ECMs, as we call them, Energy Conservation Measures. I won't go through all these in detail, but you may just want to look at a high level here. There's a description of each one, and there's full details on how to implement each one of these in our reports. For each one of these, we have estimated, based on calculations, the electricity savings, demand savings, natural gas savings. For the onsite renewable measures, there's a projection of onsite renewable energy that can be produced. So, each one of these is going to save on utility costs, so we've shown that amount. We've shown the estimated avoided BEPS penalties for that first year. Again, those penalties go up each year, but we had to just start with somewhere, so that's year 2030. And just a reminder that that is for the net direct emissions only, since we don't know yet what the penalties will be for that second standard, the site energy use intensity. We've shown an estimated implementation cost for each measure, so you can see there's a total of about $2.5 million investment for all these projects, and a simple payback period, meaning how many years does it take to earn back your investment, and the annual carbon emission reduction. So, we'll highlight a few of these on the coming slides. Here's for Ken Hill Center, there are 11 total measures, about $1.8 million total investment. So, to go through and highlight a few of these measures, this first one is a lighting upgrade, which is only applicable here to City Hall. Ken Hill Center has already been upgraded to LEDs, so as you all are probably aware, lighting has gone from incandescence to fluorescents and now LEDs. So, LEDs will save about 30% to 50% energy compared to fluorescent lighting. This next one here, we've just grouped several measures at both City Hall and Ken Hill Center to what we call HVAC controls optimization. So, and what that means is essentially taking the HVAC systems that you already have installed and making them run more efficiently. So, that may mean reducing the number of hours that they operate, or just finding a more efficient way to run them, so that they're not using as much energy. And this is done through programming in the building automation system, or through thermostats, or through sometimes installing other controls to control them more efficiently. Then, this is a big one, again, as we talked about, in order to meet that net direct emission standard, they will, these facilities will have to be transitioned to electrified heating systems. So, what that's going to mean at City Hall, there's two sources of heating here, replacing natural gas... natural gas-fired rooftop units with heat pumps, replacing natural gas-fired boilers with heat pumps, and replacing the domestic hot water heater with a heat pump. At Ken Hill Center, Ken Hill is heated with gas-fired rooftop units, and it also has a gas-fired hot water heater. And what we're showing in the pictures here on the left-hand side, those are the two boilers that are installed in the basement here at City Hall, to show what converting those to heat pumps looks like. On the right-hand side here is an air-cooled heat pump. So those boilers are roughly yay-high. Those heat pumps are about eight foot tall, about up to here. So much bigger system. They also sit outdoors. They need to be able to absorb heat from the outdoors. So whereas those boilers are inside, these would have to be a location found outside the building. So that may mean putting them, you know, carving out an area of the parking lot, putting them on the roof, something like that. You may need to run piping underground if they're out in the parking lot. So there's challenges to getting this done, but that's essentially what is involved. And then at Ken Hill Center, those are rooftop units. One thing that I do want to say about this, you know, that first target is in 2030. So some of those rooftop units at Ken Hill Center were just installed last year. You would expect about a 15-year lifecycle for those. So that puts them out at about 2039, when they would typically be replaced. So there's a decision to be weighed there between paying the penalties versus paying to replace equipment before it's due to be replaced. We also looked at onsite renewable energy, solar photovoltaics, both in the form of rooftop and carports. So these diagrams here are at Ken Hill Center, showing the proposed solar photovoltaic installations. One thing to note here is that while the solar photovoltaics does not reduce a facility's site energy use intensity, Maryland is going to give a credit in terms of how much electricity is produced through those onsite solar systems to essentially offset your onsite energy consumption. This is the same thing here at City Hall, showing the proposed solar photovoltaic systems. Again, both carport systems and a rooftop system. And that's the end of our presentation, so thank you very much. We'll open the floor for questions.
Hey, thank you very much for coming this evening. I do have a few quick questions and then I'll move on, so that all of my colleagues gets a chance to ask some questions. So I'll try and limit it to two questions. The first, I mean, you addressed the utilization of current equipment. Do you expect that there will be any, what I'm getting at, we just put in, say, new heat pumps, with a 15-year life expectancy, as we've done that. Do you imagine that for those cases where that's been done, that there may be some waivers or something given down the road for those who, to kind of help incentivize working and making sure that those who have invested don't lose? Does that make sense to you? But do you think there will be any opportunities for waivers as we go down the road?
Yeah, they currently haven't introduced anything like that. I think that once we get closer to 2030, I'm sure the state of Maryland's going to start to hear some feedback on things like that, because City of Bowie is certainly not the only ones in that position, having recently installed new equipment. I mean, there's always a lifecycle for HVAC systems, and I can't speak for the state of Maryland, but I would expect that there's a good probability that something like that will come down the line.
I believe something like that will happen. We see it on all the jurisdictions, and honestly, we're doing projects in DC and in Montgomery County, where people just install their new high-efficiency boilers and things like that, and calling us, saying, we have just installed this, we spent a lot of money, what's going on? What do you think? We give them advices, but the first thing we tell them is, do not change it. It doesn't make sense. And that can be, honestly, I don't think the jurisdiction or the state will be trying to make people spend money to spend money. It doesn't make sense.
My second question goes along with that, and that's just simply, very simplistically, I looked at the payback years, and with the new equipment and things in that, is that the payback timeframe within the life expectancy of the equipment itself? I mean, I saw, I think it was Ken Hill was 22 years. And what you're installing, do you look at that as having a life of 22 years? If you follow my question there?
Some of these paybacks really, they're very long. Unfortunately, that's what these, that's I think where the pushback will be against the state, because when we're doing these studies and we have to comply, we just value, they tell us, past 2030, there will be a fine. And that's what Brian was. Now, at that point, you're going to see how much, what's the difference between the fine I'm going to have to pay to keep my equipment, the extra three years to change it, versus changing it now and buying the bullets.
Okay.
And we can't say what, how they're going to need it for.
Okay, I'm going to pass it on to my colleagues, to, any other questions? Councilman McLeod?
Just saying a note of gratitude for your time and work putting this presentation together. Just echoing very much what the mayor said, I agree and with what you're saying. I think the state bit off a lot with their goals, and I think reality's going to come crashing down hard very quickly. So I think it's great for us to be doing the research and being prepared, but I also think that, you know, reality's going to set in sooner rather than later. We are ironically probably in a better position than most to tackle these obstacles. We know there are a lot of folks who aren't even close to being able to do this. And I think we're going to see changes that conform to that, probably sooner rather than later. Those are just my thoughts, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McRae?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a curiosity question. So other states provide exemptions when you get into those scenarios whereby you're, you know, you've just purchased something and it's not at the end of the lifecycle when it comes to 2030. Are you aware of Maryland providing any exemptions to this? Because some of this is, don't make a lot of sense.
At this time, no, but as we were saying earlier, I expect that that might be coming. As we get closer to 2030, I think the state will start to hear more feedback. I think right now, the City of Bowie is further along than most property owners in terms of looking at this and planning ahead, but I think a lot of property owners still haven't even started looking at this. And 2030 is approaching rapidly, but I think once we get a little closer, the state of Maryland will start to hear more feedback and will have to think about that.
So maybe this is something that we talk to our District 23 representatives about, so that they can bring it up on the state level with General Assembly. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeFula, will you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for being here this evening. I want to harp on the same thing that was mentioned earlier by the mayor, which is the payback on some of these, it was like 41 years for payback on one of the boilers or something, I can't remember what it was. I think it was a couple of them. 17 years for the lights, okay. There was 44 years for replace natural gas fire to use with heat pumps. So heat pump lasts 15 or 20 years, right? So...
Yeah, and one thing I want to say about that implementation cost is, that's what we expect it would take to replace 28 rooftop units with heat pumps. Now, if you look at it in terms of, if you wait until they need to be replaced...
Yeah.
...that's what you would have had to spend anyways. Instead of buying a gas-fired unit, let's buy a heat pump.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. This is no different than the equation I look at all the time. I look at my air conditioner and say, still working this summer, not going to do it until it breaks down, right? And then, because there's, the efficiency never pays off for the cost of the new equipment. So I do think we're going to have to pursue this, and it's, I mean, how much is the total expenditure cost associated with compliance for this? Assuming we follow all of yours?
Yeah, so here's City Hall. So if you average out, you know, $50,000 to $60,000, just say over 10 years, by the time you'd be replacing such equipment, you know, $500,000, $600,000 in that range?
No, no. How much, for all the mitigation, a lot of the things, the energy saves, we ought to do regardless, because they just make good sense. But all told, for your entire list of recommendations, how much would it cost to execute those?
Okay, so that, yeah, that third column from the right-hand side?
So, all right, so it's $2.5 million for City Hall and $1.8, so ouch. Wow. Almost $5 million bucks, right? Shishaev. That's crazy money. I mean, I think we'll have to figure out what it makes sense to, how much fine to pay before I lay out, you know, $4 or $5 million. And thank you for your good work in bringing this to a little bit more sharper detail on this, but clearly, it's a crazy burden.
Yes, and all these ECMs also, you don't have to do all of them at the same time.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Just get the easiest, what we advise is always go get the low-hanging fruits, and then move your way to budget and think to actually finance the well.
We definitely need some relief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. This exercise, this effort is kind of deja vu all over again. Let me touch on two little side stories, if you will. When I was in the Navy, the barracks, they would not change to heating for the winter until October. No matter how cold it got in September, that heat wasn't turned on until October 1st. And come the spring, April 1st is when they would convert it to air conditioning, and it didn't matter. You would be sitting there freezing in April, and they wouldn't turn it on. So it was always a problem, but that's how we used to think to do things. The last job I had with the government was at NIST, and the office building, the old control system for the HVAC, they took the center office of five and put the thermostat in there, and that controlled the four, the two on either side. The problem that I had was, my boss, who was in the office next to me, who had the thermostat, was always cold in the winter. And he brought a space heater in. So his office was extremely warm, and the two offices on either side, we had no heat coming in, because that thermostat sensed a high temperature. So that's the way we used to do things. And I think more automation, I think could take and have a central automation for the whole building, rather than individual controllers or what have you, would go a long way to addressing that. It's kind of interesting in that I find that, you said that 2030, 2034 is the first standard coming out, yet we're kind of being forced to do things kind of blindly, which doesn't make a lot of sense. It seems like we ought to have a standard and then a period of time to achieve the elements of those standards, not the reverse. So I think somebody's dropped the ball on that completely. And it is frustrating, because we're doing a lot of things. Now, when this building was built, it was built and certified as LEED silver, which I thought had a lot of energy efficiency associated with, but from your study, it didn't. And one of the surprising things, my understanding, both Ken Hill and City Hall, this City Hall, I understood was being converted to LED lighting, and you're saying it's not. So that surprises me. So I'm kind of a little...
Ken Hill has been converted already.
Ken Hill.
And the parking lot lighting here at City Hall has been, but not the interior lighting.
And then the last observation I'll make is, 25 years ago, staff had proposed replacing the 28 units on top of Ken Hill Center with three units, two of them sized to carry the load, and the third being an installed spare should something happen. And so my question really goes to, we should have done it back then. I advocated for it, my colleagues overrode and told staff to replace it on a one-by-one replacement. I'm wondering if there's not, instead of replacing the 28 individually, to go back to that old plan and do it with a three-unit system sized, so two of them can handle all the load, with one being an installed spare? And I'm wondering if we can't do that in a cost-effective, back then it was cost-effective to do that, in order to achieve the same thing. And then you also would open up more space for photocells on the top of the roof, because you wouldn't have all 28 units up there, you'd have three.
Yeah, and there is a section in our reports on Ken Hill Center where we discuss not just, hey, you could just replace all these 28 rooftop units with heat pump rooftop units, but there are other options that are more efficient, that would take some planning, again, because of the lifecycle of those rooftop units. More than half were just installed last year, so this is probably something that wouldn't get done until, you know, the late 2030s. But, yeah, we discussed, and what you were saying was one of the options in there of having more centralized systems. You can have a couple of rooftop units which serve larger sections, and you have VAV boxes, and it's going to be both more efficient and provide more comfort. Whereas right now, you've got a rooftop unit that serves, you know, six, seven, eight offices, and like you said, then it opens you up to that possibility of, someone's not comfortable, they put a space heater in there. So there are other options that we've discussed in there, like geothermal and variable refrigerant flow systems. So we'd agree with that.
Okay, and I appreciate the report. It was quite enlightening and actually enjoyed reading it, given my engineering background, so it wasn't that boring. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Twilsdale?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seemed like the longer my colleague was sharing his story about the Navy days, the colder I was getting, I don't know, for some reason, I was like, did someone turn me down? But thank you for the presentation. Just wanted to just kind of get some insight more on the EUI standard, right? The use, the intensity of, you know, how you measure or calculate the mixed use or complex type of buildings, how do you calculate for the mixed use? Or different, yeah, in terms of the energy usage.
Oh, so you're saying, how do you compare two buildings that are used for different things?
Correct.
Well, that's an interesting point, because when you're looking at energy use intensity, it doesn't say, well, is this building an office building? Is it a residential building? But what the state of Maryland is going to do is, they're going to set a different standard for different types of buildings. So they're not going to compare an office building with a factory with a residential building. So each type of building is going to have a different EUI standard that has to be met. What that doesn't look at, though, is how fully occupied the building is, how many hours per week that building is used. You know, is it a building which has people in it 12 hours a day, seven days a week? Or is it a building which has, you know, there's only eight to five, and half the people work remote anyways? So unfortunately, it doesn't look at that. Washington DC has their own building energy performance standards, and they, instead of looking at EUI, they look at what's called the Energy Star Score, which takes into account all those different factors. So if I was giving my advice to the state of Maryland, I would have told them to use Energy Star Score, because I think it's more accurate representation and gives credit to the way a building is actually used.
Okay.
That actually goes back to what Councilman Brady was saying. This is where between demand, cooling and heating, like more, a little bit granular control works. was in your favor. Because now, because of how they actually count in this, like, this EUI.
Yeah, because it seemed like the temperature was dropping when he was sharing his story, you know? But I think, thank you for, um, thank you for your presentation. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Andrew Bamaru?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. It was very enlightening. I echoed the sentiments of my colleague. Uh, when we first kind of encountered this building, there were a lot of, um, thoughts around its energy benefits. And so to see your presentation today is a bit startling. Um, my question is more for my colleagues and for staff. It sounds like the state of Maryland has set some pretty aggressive targets, and it looks like we may or may not meet those targets. So what is our kind of plan of attack and our recommended next steps or engagement with the state? Do you see Maryland Municipal League kind of standing out and saying, hey, many, many cities may not meet this, or what do you guys think is the next step? Thank you.
Okay, I, I'd like to say, um, thank you to you here, but the, the reason I, I, I say thank you is because you bring about something as we talk about, and we'll, we'll go there, is we need to understand why we're doing this, too. Let's not lose sight of environmental changes around us in this world. So a, a part of being aggressive in trying to do this is for, for those who may not get it yet, there, there is climate change. And we do need to look at what we do as in the quality of life for our community, and not just in dollars and cents. And I think we all can agree on that. So a part of what I, I do want to say is that a, as we go forward, and as we start talking about how we address this and all, that we understand what we're trying to achieve here. You know, and that is, uh, to, to create, uh, I guess the only way to say it is a better world for those coming behind us. And we have to start, and we have to accept the fact that it may be of a cost to us. And so we'll have to deal with that. But we'll make that kind of decision, because there'll be trade-offs and things we have to talk about as we go forward. So I, 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 I look forward to, to being able to discuss more. And Councilwoman, were you looking for us to talk about something now or just in the future? As we go forward, okay, great. All right. Yes, Councilwoman Rogers?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just one brief thing, just kind of, kind of bring this all together for, for us to think about our next steps and strategies. It looks like Montgomery County, um, actually there, they have a Department of Environmental Protection, that has, um, actually created, submitted some type of benchmarking report to, um, the state. And so therefore, they are going to be treated as if they're in compliance with the state's program. Now, does Prince George's County have a similar, obviously we don't, because if so, we would be working with the county to come up with the program or the, the, yeah, the program, and then the county would submit it to the state, and, and therefore, maybe we would get exempted. Now, we're way behind in that, but I was, I was looking at some stuff, and, and it looks like Montgomery County has prepared, and they have a county-wide program, uh, and Prince George's County doesn't. So I think we need to go county and, and state in order to make some logic out of something that, um, is pushing too hard and too fast. Uh, so thank you. I just want to make that statement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank you, uh, thank staff, uh, for you, and we appreciate your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the new business agenda is the detailed site plan, DET twenty twenty-four dash oh one six, Freeway Airport.
Good evening, Mayor.
Freeway Airport not here.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Robert Coker here, the city's transportation planner, here to introduce this detailed site plan, DET dash two thousand twenty-four dash zero one six for Freeway Airport. This project proposes two hundred and ninety-seven single-family detached units on a hundred and thirty-one and a half acres. The site address is thirty-nine hundred Church Road, Bowie, Maryland, two zero seven two one, located southwest of where Church Road crosses US fifty and is outside of the city limits. The property zone residential, single-family attached, is in an established community's growth policy area in the Prince George's County two thousand fourteen general plan, Plan Prince George's two thousand thirty-five, and, and designated for residential medium future land use in the two thousand twenty-two Bowie Mitchellville Facility Master Plan. The preliminary plan of subdivision of this development was heard by you all on April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and will replace the existing airport on the subject property. We do have a presentation to show you all that Mr. Robert Antonetti, representing the applicant, Freeway Realty, will be presenting shortly. The Bowie Advisory Planning Board met on October twenty-eighth to hear this case, to which they moved to approve this detailed site plan three to one. The county planning board is set to hear this detailed site plan on December eleventh of this year. With that, staff recommends approval of this detailed site plan, DET dash two thousand twenty-four dash zero one six, with no conditions, as the applicant has satisfied all prior staff conditions. That concludes the presentation, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rob Antonetti. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, my name is Robert Antonetti of the law firm of Ship Lane Horn. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. We're here on behalf of the applicant of this case, Freeway Realty LLC. Uh, this is, uh, a detailed site plan, uh, which is a follow-up to a preliminary plan of subdivision, which the council and the Bowie Advisory Planning Board had seen previously and had endorsed. It is a, um, a redevelopment of the airport, uh, which you're all familiar with. The total density is two hundred and ninety-seven single-family detached dwelling units. Um, we've spent a, a long time working with the surrounding communities and coming up with a proposal that seems to, uh, be, uh, reach the consensus of everyone, and we're, we're very excited about that. Uh, it's, uh, a proposal that has been memorialized in a restrictive covenant that's been recorded in land records, which sets forth the development patterns moving forward. Uh, the preliminary plan followed that, and then the detailed site plan, uh, is right on the heels of it. Uh, tonight with me, uh, we have representatives of the applicant, Mr. Ken Finley, uh, Mr. Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting, our transportation engineer, uh, and, uh, Ms. Rachel Leitzinger from Dewberry, our civil engineers, who've worked very, very hard on this application, uh, to bring it to this point. So what we have here, I have a, a brief slideshow if I could, uh, show you. Here is the, the airport as it sits today. Uh, it is still an active airport with a runway and, uh, and airplanes, repairs, fueling, tie-down leases, et cetera, and, and facilities. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um, again, here's another aerial of the entire property. Um, if we go to the next slide. This is the preliminary plan of subdivision, which the, uh, council had heard and endorsed previously, which shows the lotting pattern for the two hundred and ninety-seven, uh, single-family detached homes, um, and the access points, et cetera. If we go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is a rendering of the proposed detailed site plan layout. Um, it is nearly a, a mirror image of the preliminary plan of subdivision. Um, as you can see here, it also, uh, shows you, uh, a lot of the preservation that's happening out there in terms of the, of the tree lines. Um, it's roughly thirty-nine percent of the site outside of the lots themselves, uh, will remain in some form of open space, either conservation, uh, or, uh, thirty-nine percent, excuse me, uh, yes. Um, so we're, we're doing our best to create a nice green envelope around, around this community. If we, uh, if we can go to the next slide, um, this detailed site plan shows, uh, uh, some of the recreational amenities that are proposed here. Uh, starting from the top, uh, we have a, a dog park, um, and to the right of that, we have, uh, where a, a walking trail, which is kind of in the teal color, it's about a mile and a quarter of length, is a ten-foot wide, uh, kind of shared-use path within the community. Uh, what's in purple are, are sidewalks on either side of the street. Those, I think that's over five, uh, five miles of sidewalk, uh, within the community. So there's a lot of great connectivity within the different pods of this site. To the left, you'll see a pergola, it's kind of an open, uh, kind of green space area, uh, for, for gathering. Um, in the, uh, in the middle, there's, uh, against more of that, uh, ten-foot wide, uh, uh, shared-use path. And in the, in the southern portion, uh, there are, uh, a totlot area with two playground facilities, which is, um, uh, airport-themed. Uh, it's kind of hard to see at this scale, but there's a, a play area, it's a plane, um, clouds and the soft landing area. Uh, so, uh, really to try to pay tribute to the, uh, Rodenhouser family and the history of the airport at this location. If we go to the next slide, please. Uh, as you may recall from the detailed site plan, this is the access points that are proposed here along Church Road. Um, starting from the top, um, I guess, image right here, um, it's a right-in, right-out, uh, with, uh, appropriate deceleration, acceleration lanes. Um, and on the bottom side, um, is, uh, is the main entrance, uh, which will have turn lanes going in, left in, if you're heading north on Church Road, uh, turn lanes turning right into there. And you'll see a sign here for a signal, as discussed at the preliminary plan, we have, um, proposed a signal here. The county agrees that it's warranted, so we'll be installing that, uh, at our expense, uh, to have a fully, uh, traffic-controlled intersection, uh, which will have the dual purpose of allowing full movements in and out of the project, and at the same time, uh, will also, uh, stop traffic on Church Road, uh, which hopefully will create opportunities for people on downstream or upstream, uh, to access to and from communities that are unsignaled. So, um, that is something that we're adding, and that's something we discuss with the community as well. So we're, um, you know, these are promises made, these are promises that we'll, we'll implement as part of this project, and we look forward to doing so. If we go to the next slide, I think that may be it. Uh, that is it, yes. Um, so, um, this detailed site plan, what you may be asking it are, what do these homes will look like? Well, right now, we don't have a builder partner yet. Uh, there'll be revisions to this site plan coming forward, where the architecture will come back, and we'll show the finishes and features and square footages. Uh, this really is bringing forth the lotting pattern from the preliminary plan and showing some of the landscaping and recreational facilities. So we can then move the sub, uh, uh, record plat of subdivision and record the lots, and then we'll have, uh, hopefully, a building partner or two, uh, ready to come in and, uh, you know, bring in their home, home types and amend this detailed site plan, which, uh, will be before you again in the future. So, um, long and short of it, uh, we appreciate Mr. Coker's review and the planning staff's efforts here. Uh, we do agree with the Bowie Advisory Planning Board's recommendation for this case, and we would respectfully request your support of this application, um, as we, uh, move the project forward. And our team is here to answer any questions that you may have tonight, and thank you for your time.
Okay. I think at this time, I can declare the public hearing open. Is that correct, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, we do not have anyone signed up this evening, and no comments were received via email.
At this time, I would declare the public hearing close. Uh, councilmembers, uh, councilmember Steph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to thank, uh, the, uh, the owners and the builder, uh, who I know have been working on this for many years now. This has been a, 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 a long-moving project with some starts and stops. Historically, projects like these tend to attract a lot of negative attention. This one certainly got some, kind of early stages. But I will say, uh, I've heard a lot from the residents in that community in the last, a year and a half or so. They've expressed nothing but gratitude for everyone who's been working on this project of late. They feel that you guys have been moving hand in hand with them, you've been listening to them, you've taken their concerns, um, seriously, and that's reflected in the plan that you showed us tonight. So I just wanted to say thank you for working, uh, hand in glove, uh, with the community partners, and, um, we look forward to delivering some houses that are clearly in high demand, uh, in this market right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments at this time? Uh, Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to, uh, piggyback on Councilman S.D.'s praises and what have you. I think you've done a, an excellent job, maybe even to the point of demonstrating the perfect way to handle, uh, negotiations and dealings with the public. Start out on the wrong foot, but you got it, uh, righted and headed in the right direction. I want to commend you on that. I do still have a concern with the northern access point, the right-in, right-out. That doesn't have any kind of a median at that point, does it, on Church Road?
Um, at the entrance itself, uh, it does have, uh, I guess we would call it a pork chop concrete island, so it, it does limit you turn right in or right out. So there is a physical structure there at that main entrance.
Right, that is basically the triangle that's in the intersection.
Yeah.
There's nothing that prevents someone exiting on the right turn, right-out, cutting and heading to the left. That would require a median at that point for a short duration or something to prevent that.
It, I, I suppose, I suppose it would if somebody were to, I guess, go against the, the turn and, and, and do that, in that unlikely scenario, but, um, but when they could just go just shortly farther down and go out the, the traffic-controlled entrance and have a, have a free movement, uh, I mean, a signalized movement, that, that being...
When you watch how some drivers drive, it's not an unusual occurrence. And I'm just, you know, I'd, I'd like to put something on, on paper here to, to sit there, maybe add a consideration to our approval, to look at putting a median for that to prevent people from, uh, from, uh, going north, they could end up kind of making a U-turn into that right turn, going, if they're coming up north. But if they're going north, they can go out the right hand and U-turn, because it's unrestricted, and, and people will do what's easiest to do. This is unfortunate.
Could I ask Mr. Lenhart to comment on this briefly?
Sure.
Hi, good evening. For the record, Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic. Um, I understand what you're saying. Sure, somebody could make that movement. It will be signed, it will be marked, uh, to restrict left turns in and out. And is it going to prevent everyone from doing it? If somebody wants to do it, they can do it. But, um, they do have connectivity to the traffic signal. Uh, we could consider a median, uh, but this installation has been done in many places. It's acceptable to the jurisdiction, you know, ultimately, we need a permit for this work, and, um, it's up to the operating agency on how they want to sign it, mark it, and, um, control it. So, um, you know, at this time, they've not requested a median.
Right.
We can take a look at it, but I, I'd rather not commit to it, um, because it is ultimately the operating agency's authority.
That is true, and that is why I was suggesting we add as a consideration of our approval, not a requirement, but rather to look at it and see if it can be done.
Sure.
So I, that's what I would like to do, is add that as a consideration, just to have it looked at between now and the time you actually build this, to see if it can't be something to, uh, correct the bad habits of some, albeit probably a small number, drivers that would probably do that. And I see a lot of bad drivers on the road that do little things, but they all add up. So if we can do it, that'd be great. If, if it can't be done, or, or, uh, the agency approving it doesn't feel it's, it's necessary or worthwhile, I have no problems with that either. But I'd rather like to keep it on the play as we move forward, if you don't mind.
So I, I think that you will do a reconsideration of, of that.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's...
All right, thank you so much. Uh, any other questions? Councilmember Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I just want to say, uh, thank you for being here this evening and, uh, echo the comments that, uh, uh, my colleague made earlier with regards to, uh, or both my colleagues have made earlier with regards to your working with the community. I know it's not been an easy slog, and there is a lot of, uh, back and forth, uh, but I think, uh, you're ending up with a great, uh, a great project, uh, that's going to be good in the community. And, uh, we very much appreciate that, uh, that level of effort and our commitment to the community. So thank you.
All right, I would like to, again, for the record, which is already in here, ask Steph. Oh, I thought you had said no before.
Oh, okay. Oh, Florida.
Okay, Steph, one more time. Uh, it is your... It is your recommendation that we approve the site plan, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion at this time. Wait, Councilwoman, did you need to say, want to say something? Go ahead, please.
Since you have indulged me, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Can you just, really quickly, can you briefly just list out all the amenities again for me that you had mentioned earlier?
So the amenities will include play areas, two, two kind of totlot pre-teen play area, an area with two types of equipment in one, one portion of it. It'll include walking trails, sidewalks, it'll include a dog park, it will include a kind of a, kind of a community pavilion area, kind of a, a great lawn type area in one quadrant up here. Oh, thank you, there it is. And, you know, primarily, that is for, for this number of homes, we feel that's, you know, an appropriate amount of amenities for them. And they're single-family detached, you know, they'll have yard space and some other places to, to have recreational and mod as well. So, so that's pretty much the universe of facilities being proposed here. Okay?
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you go right ahead.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of detailed site plan 2024-016.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
No, go ahead.
Councilwoman Dodgers?
I just wanted to note for consideration, as Councilman Brady mentioned, some sort of barrier preventing a left-hand turn out of the right, out of the, the entrance coming into the subdivision. I know that road like the back of my hand. I live right up the street and I've seen the crazy driving on Church Road. In fact, I'm going to go back to the county and ask for another speed, speed camera because they do, people will try to do that. So just for consideration, and I don't know if anybody approves it or not, but I would like to make that recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will add that, I'll add that to the motion.
Okay. Seconded with consideration.
So it's been Councilman Brady, no other?
All good.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion at this time? Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say in favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adjourn to closed session under statutory authority of Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions, Article Section 3-305B7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say in favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Hey, thank you to everyone, Steph, as always. Thank you so very much for all you do. And to all of the citizens who've been out there, thank you for supporting this great city. Have a good night.